It is Tuesday, February sixteenth, and I would like to call this meeting of the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Counselor Fleming, if you would lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, counselor. Madam Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll.
The following counselors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Sorella, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kucher, Counselor Gina Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squalia, Counselor Van Hazinga, and Counselor Walsh.
Thank you. The public has been advised to contact the city clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. We have I'm sorry, I don't have the registration page in front of me. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone currently waiting to get in or FATV?
Sorry, I can't see.
Check it now.
Thank you both. I'll wait just a moment, see if we have anyone. I lost, when everything crashed on my computer a few minutes ago, I lost the document that I had open with the registrations.
Council President, I believe it's just reappointments for appointments.
All right, if you want, you can let them in. We may or may not call on them at the time, but you can let them in just so that they know that they are, that we recognize that they are present. And that being said, first on the agenda, we will hear a report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the Appointments Committee met and we held several, we heard several appointments. We heard reappointments to the Board of Trustees for the Public Library, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, and Human Rights Commission. We also held, we heard new appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Public Library and the Board of Trustees for Public Burial Grounds. All of the appointments were approved unanimously. I will note that the appointment for Mr. James Walsh to the Board of Trustees for the Public Library was three to zero, still unanimous, but Counselor Walsh abstained from the discussion in the vote.
All right, and that said, Counselor Walsh, I assume I know what you're about to say, but go ahead.
Yes, I would like to have Mr. Walsh's appointment taken separately because I'll have to recuse myself from that vote.
Certainly. If there is no objection, we will take those separately. Counselor Boishman, you have a comment?
No, I'll wait after we accept the appointments, and I'll say something after, okay?
Okay. In that case, if there is no objection, we will accept the report and recommendation of the Committee on All Members Except Mr. James Walsh by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved by unanimous consent. We will now take up the matter of the appointment of Mr. James Walsh and okay, Counselor Walsh has left the, or has recused herself from the meeting for the record. That said, if there is no objection, we will accept the appointment of Mr. James Walsh by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, that passes by unanimous consent. Counselor Walsh, you may return, and Counselor Boishman, you had a remark to make.
Yep, I just want to say one thing, some of the candidates on here that I know, I've been on this on some of the committees for a very long time, and I would like to tell them, I will say thank you to everyone. Some I don't know, I never even met them, I don't even know what they look like, so, but I'd like to say thank you very much as a city official. I think it's quite nice that they take the time out of their lives to participate in open government. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor, and I think we can all echo that sentiment. Next, we have a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
If there is no objection, we will accept the report of the Records Committee by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is accepted. We have communications from his honor, the mayor, two appointments which will simply be placed on file, not requiring a vote. Vincent Cusiteri II to be reappointed to the position of City Solicitor for a one-year term to expire January first, two thousand twenty-two, and Ms. Mary E. Kringan to serve as a mayoral appointment on the Fitchburg Retirement Board. We also have Ms. Krista Ford Rhodes as a member of the Human Rights Commission to complete Mr. Adrian Ford's term to expire May first, twenty-two thousand twenty-two. That is forwarded to the Appointments Committee. Next, we have a report from the Economic Development Committee, Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February third, two thousand twenty-one, the Economic Development Committee met to hear bundle two of the Phase Two zoning, proposed zoning changes. The meeting was held immediately following the Legislative Affairs Meeting, which held the same subject matter. The Economic Development Committee accepted as a basis all of the, or the proposed changes as amended by the Legislative Affairs Committee, with the exception of a few changes. And I'll go through those here. In section, in the infill lots provision in section one eighty-one point four two five three, in section C, the economic, the committee voted to strike the second half provision allowing municipal own lots to be considered infill lots. The concern was that the process laid out, the proposed amended provision was unclear. It was not clear how this would be handled and what obligations or rights this would give the city and determine whether or not a city-owned parcel would be considered an infill lot. For a little bit of history, the infill lots have to be established as of a date of adoption. This allows sort of orphaned or isolated lots that have at least five thousand square feet, but may not have sufficient area to meet the requirements of the zoning district to be developed. We also edited the proposed changes in section E. This had proposed to allow for subdivisions to create infill lots. The committee voted to strike this section. The concern raised was that it goes against the intent of the infill position, which is to allow for development of isolated lots, as I previously discussed it. This striking of the section was also recommended by the Planning Board Chair, who was in attendance at the meeting. Another change to the adopted proposed changes was in the accessory apartments section in one eighty-one point three two one two, section C for A. This was a relatively minor change that just clarified the limit to dwell, to a structure to match the terms used by the assessor. This wasn't not a meaningful change in intent, but just a clarification to make it easier to decipher using language that is used by the assessor on their field cards. And there was a slight altercation to the parking proposed changes as amended by the Legislative Affairs Committee, and that was merely in reference to an exception for small-scale residential development on Main Street. It was to widen the area along Main Street from approximately day to mechanic rather than just to academy, and the purpose of this was to match a proposed expansion of the downtown business district to include this area. And that's all I have for my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I see, Counselor Squalia, I am however, going to ask that you hold comment until we also take the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee, because both committees met concerning the same items. So it makes sense to deal with them together. With that, if there is no objection, we'll take Legislative Affairs out of order on the agenda. Seeing no objection, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope that no one objects. I'm not going to go through all of the changes that Legislative Affairs recommended. The minutes for that meeting were seven pages long. I think that all of those changes are available on the website. And I think that all of the counselors have received those changes, so if there's no objection, I'm just going to refer to the minutes of the meeting and and allow the council to accept my report based on the minutes.
Thank you. So we have both Legislative Affairs and Economic Development now before the council, and with that, I have Counselor Squalia.
Yes, I participated in the Economic Development Committee, which occurred directly after the Legislative Affairs Committee, and I just want to know one thing, that the farmers market amendment that we went through through the multiple meetings, the Farmers Market Advisory Committee Chair, she still has a few additions that she wants to add from other farmers market throughout the state, and she was told she's allowed to do this up until our meeting on March second. So just to note that there may be some minor changes recommended on our March second meeting to the Farmers Market zoning amendment changes. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, and yes, I will confirm for the council and for the viewing public that none of the approvals that the council is making of these changes to the zoning are final until we close that meeting on the second. There will also be, let me just check. Yes, there will, I will note for counselors that there is still going to be a public hearing on this Phase Two bundle two at a future date. So if there's any extensive discussion of the minutia of these changes, I would suggest but not require that any counselors hold those issues until the public hearing. That said, Counselor Boishman?
I only got one thing. I'm hoping that on these, on these changes, you're not, you're not keeping, like on the multifamilies where you're holding up to have two pocket spaces per unit. What happens if I own a multifamily house and I only get one bedroom units? And there's only a single person there, why would I need two parking areas? First, one.
So counselor, that is actually something that has been discussed, and there are some fixes for that in the existing recommendations and other things that will be discussed going forward. Multifamily was postponed by both committees to a future date because it was quite complex.
Okay.
That will be addressed, however.
It will be addressed. All right. Okay, Mr. Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
All right. So in that case, we are not actually voting tonight on whether to make the changes recommended by the committees. As I said, there will be a future public hearing on that topic. So I would ask simply that we have unanimous consent to accept the reports of the committees.
Done move.
Thank you. And seeing no objection, the committee reports are accepted but not acted upon and forwarded for public hearing as previously scheduled. Thank you. We now will hear a report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Gina Tally.
Mr. President, Finance met on January twenty-sixth and took up, I'm sorry. Finance met on last week, the ninth, and took up the following matters. My apologies, counsel, my computer is not pulling up the documents, so if you've just been with me one second, unless I have the minutes right here, sorry. There we go. Committee took up the following on February ninth. In order to accept a grant for two hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program Action Grant for the planning and design phase of green infrastructure stormwater improvements along John Fitch Highway. That was adopted unanimously. Thirteen twenty-one, in order to accept a grant from the Environmental Protection Asset Management Program of the state for ninety-six thousand six hundred dollars, begin the development of a geographic information system-based asset management program for the water department that was adopted unanimously. Fourteen twenty-one was to accept a grant from the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, greening the Gateway Cities Municipal Grant Program for twenty thousand, which is to plant trees in city parks and rights of way within the designated planting zone.
Counselor, can I interrupt you just a brief moment? Counselor Green doesn't, has a different set of items in front of her. And Counselor Fleming is saying she's got a different date on her agenda. Can we just clarify those issues very briefly before we proceed? Hang on, Madam Clerk has a comment, I believe. Then I'll, then I will go directly to Counselor Green.
Yes, President Sorella, I believe it may be the correct petitions, but the wrong date on the petition. I believe that is all from the ninth.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Green, is that, was that the only discrepancy, or is there something else?
Well, I've yeah, on the agenda, I've got Finance Committee meeting of January twenty-sixth with all different petition numbers and all different readings. So are we, are we reading from twenty-six?
The meeting date is incorrect. It was February ninth, but the petition write-ups are what I am reading.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and so on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize, counselor. You may proceed.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's quite all right, it happens.
Fifteen twenty-one was in order to accept a grant of twenty-five hundred dollars from the Community Foundation of North Central Massachusetts to be used towards wayfinding and informational signage for the Rollstone Hill Trail. That was adopted unanimously. Sixteen twenty-one was in order, was a loan order to appropriate four point five million dollars to pay for the costs of the city's SCADA upgrade in Fallula Transmission Main Water Project Projects. That was adopted unanimously. And twenty dash twenty-one was a petition from Vincent P. Cusiteri Esquire to convert false alarm notification fees to municipal charge lien as outlined in the enclosed petition, and Chief Martino was there to speak on this as he was the person responsible for bringing this to the attorney's attention. The committee adopted that unanimously for zero.
Thank you. We are going to hold out zero sixteen twenty-one because that requires a two-thirds roll call vote. So the other items, unless someone has a contrary motion, the other items, zero twelve twenty-one through zero fifteen twenty-one, as well as zero twenty twenty-one are before the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right.
Motion.
On the motion, Counselor Boishman?
On the mo, I just want to, I'm approving it, but I just want to say one thing. On zero twenty twenty-one, I really think we as a council should start thinking about going up on the, on the fees on that. We're sending a couple cops cars up there to address false alarms and you know, you're taking the chiefs of the road for twenty to forty minutes out, two cop cars. So that's a lot of time off our city streets to be going to a false alarm. They should be fixed and addressed. That way there, we can get more money back. I believe it'd be helpful, and I think it'll make the parties work harder to fix their problems. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Gina Tally. I am just going to remind the council, however, that the issue of fines and fees is not what we are voting on tonight, so if it's a response to that, I would request that you hold it for another time when that's before us. Otherwise, you may proceed. You have the floor.
Okay, this petition from Chief Martino through the attorney was to address some of the most problem accounts in the city, and they were very small in size. They total about five thousand dollars in outstanding fees. So this is really meant to attack those locations that continuously ignore the police department's invoices and communications, and the chief stated in the meeting that you know, he gives two or three bites at the apple before he starts attaching fees or fines to these homeowners or business owners. So he gives them quite a bit of latitude, and ninety-eight percent of the time, he says, people pay on the first warning notice. This is really to involve the worst of the worst, those that have been notified several times, not getting answers, not getting paid. So this is an avenue he's looking to take in order to recoup that money from those who are not who are not paying attention, who are not, who are floating the, the orders to pay. So it's a very small number of properties. The great majority pay on time, and the chief made a point of saying that this is not meant to be a moneymaker either, that he understands that this is, people make mistakes, sometimes more than once. This is really to address those locations that are really, really scofflaws, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comment? If not, we have a motion and second. If there is no objection, then we will accept those and act upon those recommendations by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is so done. Now we have zero sixteen twenty-one loan order for four million five hundred thousand dollars to pay the SCADA upgrade and Fallula Transmission main projects. This requires a two-thirds vote as it is a loan order.
Motion to adopt.
Just a moment, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman?
On the motion, the only thing I get to say, and I'm not trying to change any rules, I know it's not what's in front of us is, but I'm tired of being poor, and I think we ought to start looking at the fact of the matter that four point five million dollars, if we came up with four point five million dollars as a city, we can get back over a million dollars in interest going back into our kitty instead of us paying it out to somebody else. And I think we should stop looking at that cost ability. All right, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gina Tally.
And speaking on that, Counselor Boishman raised that point at the meeting, and Attorney, Auditor Brooks stated unequivocally that that is not possible for the city to do. And if those who watched the meeting or looked in their packets about these projects, they are, the loans are already baked into the water department's budget and rate infrastructure. There's no rate increases that are coming down the pike for these loans. They're already covered budgetarily, and the city can't loan its water department a loan with interest. Auditor Brooks said that we can't do that. We're not allowed to do that. So it's not going to cost the rate pairs anymore. This is part of our current rate structure in the water department's budget for debt service because they're paying off two very large loans this year, so they're able to cover these two projects without increasing rates. Thank you.
Thank you. That said, I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, seeing no one further, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
I am.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. We now have a public hearing. Zero zero nine twenty-one. This is Unit Hill Fitchburg Gas and Electric Company for a proposed new pole number eight on McIntyre Road approximately one thousand four hundred and seventy feet west of the intersection of Williams Road as shown on sketch plan number three, four, five, six L dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-one. I now declare the hearing open. We have I believe we should have Mr. James D. present tonight to present the petition.
Nate Glenny said he is not present at this time.
Thank you, counselor. Nope, I just saw that. Okay, in that case, I
Motion we hold?
Second.
Madam Clerk, you have a comment?
Sorry. Yes, you could continue the hearing to a later date if you prefer since you already opened it.
Yes, since it is open, I would request that we convert that to a motion to continue the hearing.
And I changed my motion to continue.
Is there any objection? Okay, that is, that is the new motion then. That said, is there anyone who would like to speak on that motion? Seeing none, if there is no objection, then we will continue the hearing to the following regularly scheduled council meeting by unanimous consent, and Madam Clerk, if this passes, I would ask that you please reach out to Mr. D. and make certain that he knows.
Yes, I'll be happy to do that. I just would like to point out that your next public hearing is the big one on March second for the zoning. Do you wish to have it then, or would you like to move it to the sixteenth of March?
Thank you for reminding me of that. I would suggest that we continue it to the sixteenth.
Okay, thank you.
If that is amenable to everyone, seeing no objection, the hearing is continued to the sixteenth by unanimous consent. All right, we now have orders finance zero twenty-one, zero twenty-one twenty-one and zero twenty-two twenty-one. Those will both be sent to the Finance Committee. We have a request for suspension of the rules on zero twenty-three twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to sell the parcel of land at sixty-five Minneapolis Avenue and to execute the deed of conveyance as outlined in the enclosed order. That is a side yard sales parcel that was approved over the summer and has been delayed for largely COVID-related reasons.
Move to prom.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, if there is no objection, we will, oh, actually, I need a motion for suspension of the rules, I'm sorry.
Someone did suspend the rules.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on that motion?
Sure, Counsel Fleming?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Schultz?
Yes.
Counsel Squalia?
I.
Counsel Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counsel Boishman?
Yes.
Counsel Kucher?
Yes.
Counsel Gina Tally?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. I would ask that the motion please be renewed.
Done move.
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. Again, if there is no objection, hearing none, the matter passes by unanimous consent. Item zero twenty-four twenty-one is an order of notice setting the date of a public hearing for the laying out of a portion of Tibbetts Circle as a public street or way. This will be set for public hearing on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. As will the subsequent order laying out a portion of Tibbetts Circle as a public way, zero twenty-five twenty-one. And then we have a number of ordinances, zero twenty-six twenty-one, twenty-seven twenty-one, twenty-eight twenty-one, twenty-nine, and thirty twenty-one. I would ask for consent to waive the reading of the ordinances.
Done move. Seconded.
If there is no objection, they are before the council, and I would seek unanimous consent to send them to their first reading.
Moved.
Seeing no objection, they are all to be sent to their first reading. We have one announcement courtesy of Uh, we have one announcement courtesy of Counselor Kucher. Uh, on Saturday, February twenty-seventh, from five to seven PM, the British American Club, uh, will be holding a spaghetti and meatball dinner. Uh, tickets are on sale for eight dollars, either at the club or via a member. And that concludes our agenda for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Uh, we will, does anyone need a recess before we go to the special meeting for?
Yeah, five minutes would be nice.
Yeah, a couple more minutes would be, would be asked, Counselor, or President.
All right, if, if no one has any objection, I mean, we're out of a meeting, so we don't have to do this by motion.